Yeah, Brian was standing on taking notes.
So we just start when he gets back, we defer back to him.
Team, Commissioner Holbert.
You're, I asked you no already.
Okay, awesome. So Commissioner Holbert will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do any of the planning commissioners have conflict that they need to declare tonight?
No.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number two, which is approval of the September 26th minutes.
Make a motion that we approve 26 minutes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. We'll now move to the October 10th commission meeting agenda minutes.
Motion to approve the October 10th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously as well. The next item is the approval of the October 24th work session minutes.
I motion to approve the October 24th, 2003 work session minutes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously as well. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is a public hearing to consider the amendments to Title 11 subdivision regulations. And this comes because of SB 54 that was passed earlier this year by the legislature. Or sorry, I do elections, so SB 54 is like the mother of all election bills. So that's why I said SB 54, SB 174. We'll get that clear. Planning Commission, not election.
He needs to shift, yeah.
Yeah. We'll turn some time over to Steve to do a presentation, and then after that, we'll go to the public hearing.
Okay, and I apologize for the length of this. Kind of came, it's simple, but it's not. So as, as you read in your staff report, generally in an ordinance, if it's blue, it means it's brand new, new language. If it's red and struck out, it's language taken out. Well, speaking with our attorney, he's saying, well, if we're moving chapters, so like for the example is chapter two, which is concept plan, the state or this bill says you can't require that. So all of chapter two is being removed. So I thought, well, another ordinance's definitions is chapter two. So why don't we just move chapter 11 into chapter two? And my thought was, well, I'll just keep everything black that's normal and anything that's new and, you know, struck out is, is those, you know, typical colors. But he said, no, show everything. So even though it's chapter 11 and most of it is the same, but it's brand new to chapter two, it's all blue. But I wanted to show you there's sections of that, the definitions that were, were going to need to be removed and sections that needed to be added. So you got two new colors of green and orange. Green struck out means it was part of the old chapter, but going to be removed. And orange is new to the old chapter, which is part of the new chapter. So chapter two is affected. Three and four I left the same, that's the preliminary and final. And then five, six, seven, eight, and nine, everything just kind of got pushed down. The reason why it got pushed down is one of the chapters, and I can't remember exactly which one, was public hearings. And the state says, well, you know, subdivisions has got to be done in 15, the plat has to be done in 15 days. The final's got to be done in 20 days. So there's no chance of coming, one, to this meeting and, two, having a public hearing. So as discussed in the, the work session, a month, I think it was a month and a half ago, we kind of went through that requirement and then who's going to be the, the land use authority over subdivision plats and, and stuff. So I muddied it up really bad, and I hoped I made it somewhat clear with the, the new colors. So we'll, we'll go through this quickly, but, so again, and sorry for the audience, it's kind of small, but, chapter one was, again, just the purpose of the subdivision. We removed, really, it was just, the ordinances before 2007 didn't have the date on which it was affected. Because we really, this ordinance has been around since 1955. It's just been updated. So I just said, well, let's just get rid of that one, rather than say this ordinance is affected this date. We're just renewing the subdivision court code. And just backtrack, just so you know, both my attorneys have reviewed this. We sat down and went through it, and two engineer, three engineers with Wasatch Civil went through this and made recommendations of what to, to change in order to make it legal and technical, not just a planning, you know, thing. So those, those changes are, are in there. So in chapter one, it was just 11-15, just kind of taking out that date. And then 11 dash, or 11 dash 1 dash 7, we added, because these are more of the boundary line adjustments or, you know, meets and bounds subdivisions, that's, you know, kind of creating subdivision lots. Just because of their nature, there's, the state code doesn't require a full-on plat a lot of the time. So there's some things that could just be recorded by a warranty deed. But I wanted to make sure that it was, the city at least had some review, can put a, a letter to associate with it, saying, yes, the city has reviewed this, it complies with the code, and go have fun. So that's what the, the next two ones are in 7-1, or 11-1-7, is just adding in, contact zoning administrator, get a verification letter. Because you'd be surprised how many people just go to the county, record a subdivision of their land, and not even go through the city for approval. So not, no fault to the county, they, they're supposed, they're doing their job. They're not there to police that if people follow city codes and stuff. But again, it's just one of those, let's put it in there so they, if they read, they'll, they'll know, just get a letter. And then in 11-113, it said city planner, but my official title is zoning, planning and zoning administrator slash city planner. So just to be consistency, this was the only place that said planner. So we just switched it to zoning administrator, and so it was consistent with zoning code, sign code, and now subdivision. So those are the big changes in, in chapter one. Oh, and then I, I strike that 11-113, we added in, this is where the engineer wanted to have some review of traffic control devices, making sure we're meeting OSH, OSHTO? Urshto? Jason, you'd probably know better than I do, it's A-A-S-H-T-O.
Ashto.
Ashto. It's just a, an engineering for streets and stuff, kind of standard. So just put the language in there, that, that's what we're going to be following, so everybody kind of has an idea. It's not just put a finger up here and say, today we're going to do this, and tomorrow we're going to do that. It's got some sort of a standard in it. And then 11-117, we struck out concept plan. So chapter two is where the, the real fun begins. Again, chapter two was the concept plan requirement. State required it to be removed, we can't require that as an, an application. So all of chapter two is really going away, we're just moving chapter 11 into it. The big highlights, though, are chief executive officer. Again, because council, mayor, planning commission are being pretty much removed from this process, we don't need to have, you know, definition of who the chief executive officer is. Then we added in the community development director or CD director. And the definition is just as, you know, community development director of Roy City, Utah, or authorized designee. So he, that position will be the land use authority over this code, as we discussed in the work session. Now with him, the DRC still is in play, so building, fire, engineering, public works, planning, I'll give their reviews to the, the CD director, but he'll be making the decision. So I kind of went through what chapters three and four will be, be doing. So anywhere where it said council and/or planning commission, we replaced it with CD director. And then there's just, you know, and mayor being the land use authority as well for signatures, it's just the CD director will be the, the final signature. With that, because council and planning commission have been taken out of it, they also required that public hearings no longer be part of it. Can't get a public hearing when I have to notify it in 10 days, but I have to have 15 days to get the review done. There's real no way of doing it unless they give it to me day 15, I advertise it and come. But you guys aren't the land use authority under this, so public hearings have been crossed out as well. Chapter three and four, really, it's just taking the, the council and the commission out of, out of it, replacing it with the, the CD director. We had requirements, and this is where I was talking with the engineer, really is, it required a title report and tax clearance report. The great thing is Weaver County is, is an awesome resource, where you can just go on the property, hit all the information you ever want, and you have a title report at your hands and a tax clearance notice. So instead of requiring them to give me, you know, another 20 pages of information, I've just gone, gone there. So we don't, we don't need that, and it really was just kind of paperwork, so to speak. We are adding in the requirement for a geotechnical report on the building department. And engineering are looking for that again. It helps for even the construction of the buildings. You know, what, what does the soils look like? Will determine how the building has to be constructed, at least the footings, how far down. Then we, we find if there's any springs or anything else that's in the ground, so we added that in it. We have been requiring that anyway, the building code requires it, but we just put it into the subdivision code as well. Rest of chapter three really is just replacing commission and council with CD director. Same with chapter four, just the same type of stuff, language-wise, remove title report. The number, number of days and stuff is, is set by the state statutes of how long we have to do it and what we can do. And so the, the big fun, again, comes in chapter five. So chapter five was the public notice requirements, no more public notice requirements. So what was chapter six now becomes chapter five. So again, kind of that, if it's green, it was going to be part of the old code to be removed. And if it was orange, it was part of the old code to be new. So we're just removing all the public notice requirements and adding in the building permit portion of things, again, was part of chapter five. Six is very similar, it used to be building permits. We're moving chapter seven, which was the construction required, or the subdivision construction. So these are the plans that we're, you know, we're required to have. Again, it's just moving one chapter into a new one, removing the old one, putting in the new one. And that's really what the rest of them are. There are some, again, adding, taking out the council, adding in CD director, who's to, to sign it. We did add in, engineer saw this, at intersection, location, alignment, design. So we should have at least some sort of alignment, so we're not, you know, off kilter, where people are going to run into each other, making left-hand turns or right-hand turns. So we added in some language there. And then once you get to, chapter nine, again, was, was subdivision development. Now it's required improvements and guarantees. No real language was, would added there. And the rest of it, chapters 10, 11, and if you don't believe me, you can look. Chapter 12 was reserved back in 2007 for a cluster subdivision ordinance. And it doesn't exist yet. So I figured after, what, 16 years of still being reserved to do it, I'm not going to propose one. So we'll just eliminate that reserved chapter for a cluster subdivision that has never happened. So there you go, long story short, hey, only 15 minutes. Any questions?
I think it was pretty well done, I was looking through, so.
There's a little bit of light reading in the packet, so.
It took me longer to read than, than you discussed it, I'll tell you.
Just missed the part with the calming circles in it.
Well, that was another section. That's, you know, the transportation plan. So if no other questions, then that's all I have.
No other questions, we can.
Make a motion to go on to public hearing.
I guess my recommendation to approve is written.
That was a lot of words to say that, Steve.
Motion to go on to public hearing.
Motion for a public hearing, do we have a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move to our public hearing portion, so any members of the public that would like to speak to this. We'll have you come up to the microphone, you can state your name, your address, and then we'll give you three minutes to, to tell us anything you want to about this, or make any suggestions. So we'll turn the time over to the public. Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, doesn't look like it, so we can close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close. Have a second?
Who seconded?
Tanner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this? If not, a motion is in order.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the city council regarding the proposed amendments to Title 11 subdivision regulations as per SB 174. Second.
Have a second, all in, oh wait, this is a roll call.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Felth?
Aye.
Mr. Spar?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Holbert?
Aye.
Carrie 7-0.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item number six, which is a request for site plan and architectural approval for Golden West Credit Union, located at approximately 5627 South, 2050 West. Do we have the applicant here? Okay, we'll have you come on up to the microphone, and if you'd please state your name and your address, and then tell us about your project.
Hi there, my name is Eric Mollberg, I represent Golden West Credit Union this evening. I, my address is 2010 North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah. Do you want me to just speak to what we're proposing?
Yeah, that would be great.
UDOT is performing a widening of the road there, of 5600 South. And it's going to encroach into the north side of the existing credit union. And the widening will basically go into the parking lot side of the credit union there. So Golden West would like to expand toward the south with a new drive-through canopy and extend their property down to the south to the 5650 South Street. Golden West Credit Union has already acquired that home on that corner of 5650 South and 2050 West. And we'd just like to get these improvements going, if we could, before UDOT starts their widening project of 5600 South.
Too late. I've already moved a lot of dirt. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Okay, we'll go to staff for some comments, if we have any more, we may address it, but thank you very much.
As mentioned, this is a request for site plan and architectural review or approval for the Golden West Credit Union, located at 5627 South, 2050 West, here in Roy. Just kind of give you an idea of where it's at, you got 5600 South, I think everybody's aware of. Across the street from Golden West is 711, and then America First Credit Union. East of that is Ocean Mart and the big complets there. There's a single-family residential area south and southwest of it. 2050 West on the east side is all commercial. On the west side, Golden West was really the only commercial on that side, and everything else is, is single-family. Once you get to 56, then everything on the south side was zoned R3, it currently still is. And we'll see how things come and play when they're, when they're done. And the north of that, again, is just a single-family residential. So when you look at the, kind of the existing site plan, it does kind of look muddy. But I have this handy-dandy wand. You guys see this?
Do I need to turn it? I can see it.
Yeah, okay. So the existing building, the bank is here, their existing drive-through is on location, and the house is on the south. So the only thing, well, yeah, and then UDOT would be taking all of the, the parking lot in front. But with that, didn't want to work, there we go. So you can see all of a sudden, the parking lot's gone. So in order to, to get enough stalls, they've purchased this home so they can move the, the drive-through window or stuff down south a little farther. They still have some parking here, which is about, I think it was 10 or 11 stalls. They've got four here, and they actually have more parking than is required by ordinance. By, I think it's about like three or four. So they, parking-wise, they, they meet the code, the build, the building would be here. One of the concerns the staff has had, both engineering, public works, and planning, is this access point, because 5650 really is still a single-family road. We would just propose that the access come off of 2050, just so we're not getting that, that commercial traffic rounding, rounding the corner. It should be fairly simple to, excuse me, simple to, to accommodate that. There are a few other issues that we can get back to when I bring up the, the DRC. Building-wise, it's very similar to most of the building. Part of the background you see on the top one has that portion of the building that projects up and out. It has the same stucco as that, but most of the building is very similar to the rest of the building that has brick or spit-faced block, same color, same pitched roof, same materials. So architecturally, it, it matches the, the existing. Part of the issue comes is the downtown west zone requires a different set of materials. But for such a small building with four posts and a roof, staff felt it was more important probably for it to look like the, is the mother building, so to speak, rather than have its, you know, all metal and, and stuff like that. So it made more sense for cohesiveness and just kind of overall look. So staff really didn't bring anything up on that, even though the ordinance does require it. So that would be something to, to look at. Again, as, as mentioned, staff just kind of talked about the, the access point. The ordinance is a little different than typical, usually it's a, a minimum setback, you know, 20-foot minimum setback, and then you can go from beyond that if you wanted to. This zone is actually zero to 15, so it's minimum of zero, maximum 15. But the other aspect is if you butt up against a single-family residential zone, you have to have a minimum of 12 or 20-foot setback from that. So the, the building, the drive-through building will have to move east. Now, seems like a big thing on a site plan, but it really, it doesn't really change much of their configuration of how they're going to do things. There are some parking stalls along there, we'll lose those, but they already have more than parking stalls than required by ordinance, so they won't be, be lacking in that. I know it's nice to have more, but they, they won't be required to have it. Other than that, staff would just recommend approving the site plan and architectural review as posed, with the conditions that the DRC comments are satisfying.
Any questions for Steve?
Is 2050 West, is that a city road? Or, okay, so they shouldn't have a big problem trying to get access through that, then?
No, I mean, right now, the single-family home does, the existing drive-up window uses that road to, to gain access. So it's really just moving it down south and then curving it on property, rather than going around the corner.
Okay.
Do you think there's any chances that UDOT might change their plans? Like, say if they start working on this to jump the gun, and then all of a sudden, UDOT's like, well, actually, we need to do this?
Well, UDOT is actually, they're conservative, but it, it really is one of those, they've taken more than the width of the road will be. Because there is a requirement that we imposed on them that have a 10-foot wide trail on the south side of that road, so you'll have the curb gutter, some space, and then the trail, and then some space, and then their property. So what they have taken is really all that they're going to take from Golden West. Okay. So you won't, it won't go much further than the, than it is.
I think this is a pretty good workaround to keep a business in Roy, so I'm, I'm pretty excited they're able to do this and.
One caveat is, and I, I like our ordinance a lot, the single-family home was zoned R18. Credit Union is downtown gateway, but our ordinance allows for if a lot's split, so these lots are being combined into one, I can move that zone down to encompass the entire lot. So, I mean, it makes sense to, to be able to activate that kind of section of the code. It doesn't really change what's going on, it keeps a business here, rather than forcing them to go find somewhere else to, to eliminate it. So the city's worked hard, they've worked hard to try to keep them here.
Yeah.
So the, the drive-up is just really more like a canopy, not necessarily a, a building?
Yeah, it's just a, a canopy, kind of like Maverick or any other service station, you're just going to have the drive-up windows, the, well, it's kind of the, put it in, it goes off and comes over to them, and then. put it in, it goes off and comes over to them and then, so.
Matches existing.
Yeah, the building materials exactly match the, the existing, so.
And how far away does it have to be from the property line?
On the west side, it can't be closer than twenty. On the east side, it can't be, it can be zero to fifteen. So they've got several, they've got enough space, and I can't read it on there, but Patrick has better eyes than I do. I want to say they have almost thirty or plus feet on the east side. So they, I think they have nine feet to play with. So.
It's twenty-nine feet, yeah, they got nine feet.
So, it, it can be done, and can still meet what their intention is and meet our code. So again, the site plan as presented shows that on the west, it just, just moved to the east, other than that, it really is the same.
I mean, it was already designed to be a single flow anyway, so this just makes it so you don't have that bypass option, you have to just go straight through there, yeah.
Is there a likelihood that they wouldn't get granted the access off of fifty-six South from UDOT?
Uh, UDOT's already, I assume, in play. One of our concerns is just make sure it's, it's written that they have a cross-access agreement when this is all said and done. But I believe UDOT is, is granting them that, that ability.
Right, yeah, I was just thinking if they didn't get that, then would they be in violation of not having enough parking spots for the structure? If they didn't have that access?
Uh, then UDOT would have to pay out a lot more money for them. So UDOT owns all those properties, so it's just a matter of having a deed recorded, giving an ax, cross-access, so. Every project that comes in that's along their road, they go through that process of number of access points, if there's two, can they eliminate one? Can you share with somebody else, can you, you know, they, they look for those opportunities to limit the number of access points, keep them three-hundred-and-fifty feet apart from each other, require, you know, cross-access, so knowing that they own these properties, I'm pretty sure they've already signed it up and given it to Golden West. But that is one of the requirements, just a letter from UDOT saying that's what's happened and a deed.
Okay, if there's no further questions, a couple of motions are in order.
I make a motion that we approve the site plan review with the conditions that all current and future DRC review comments are complied with, along with any conditions as stated in the staff report.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously.
Make a motion that we approve the architectural review with conditions that all current and future DRC review comments are complied with, along with any conditions as stated in the staff report or during this commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Um, next item is item number seven, which is a request for site plan approval for Limitless Potential, which is located at approximately forty-eight eighty-one South, nineteen-hundred West.
Are you gonna stop this? Are you gonna pass them out, or do you want me to put it on? Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Doyle, and I am the owner and director of Limitless Potential LLC.
Can you state your address, just so we have that?
My personal address?
Yes.
It's, uh, nineteen-fifty-nine North, three-fifty West in Sunset, Utah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things that I want to do is make sure that everybody knows exactly what ABA is, because I have learned that nobody is quite sure if you have not received ABA services or have a child who has, you don't quite know what it is, so. We at Limitless Potential want to unlock the boundless capabilities of all individuals, we work with individuals who have autism spectrum disorder, and we provide ABA services, which is applied behavior analysis. It's based off of the theories of Skinner, and it is one of few approved types of therapies for children with ABA or with autism. I, uh, hold a master's degree and I'm a board-certified behavior analyst, as well as a licensed behavior analyst in the state of Utah. I have spent the last four years working as a clinical director for another company. So our mission at Limitless is to create a world where everyone is empowered to embrace their unique strengths, transcend perceived limitations, and live the life that they desire. So as I mentioned, ABA is a type of therapy based off of the theories of behaviorism. Um, what it has done is we assess a child, it's very individualized. We go through a series of tests based off of the individual and their current skills. We identify what skills and what behavioral supports they're lacking, and then from that, we base a plan for that child. Um, services can go anywhere from four hours a week up to forty hours a week. It's a very individualized, based off the child. So the building that we're moving into, it's the former Pages daycare. And it is set up ideally for what we're doing, a lot of individuals with autism spectrum struggle with social-emotional. So having a clinic that they can come to allows us that opportunity to help with social interactions more and to set up more situations where they get a chance to practice those. Um, we also want to eventually do, um, community outreach to help families who have children on the spectrum with parent support. Uh, we will work under the Department of Health and Human Services licensing, so we have to have an outpatient and a day treatment license in order to do what we do in a clinical setting. So I wanted to also let you guys know how this impacts the community in Roy, so autism is on the rise. When our middle child was diagnosed in two thousand and eight, it was one in fifty-five boys were diagnosed with autism. The statistics now are one in thirty-eight, thirty-six children are diagnosed with autism, so in Roy alone, that's about three-hundred and eight children that have autism. As I mentioned, ABA is one of only a few therapies that can help them be able to achieve their goals in life. Ninety percent of adults with autism are under or unemployed. Um, and all ABA companies, there's a lot of them in the area, but every single one of them currently have a waitlist anywhere from six months to twenty-four months. Um, we have the benefit of currently not having a waiting list. And along with the inability to get services, there's also you're going to raise costs of social programming, um, costs to the schools and everything if these children cannot get the services to help them be able to engage in their world appropriately. So the next page, the interior improvements, what we're doing on the inside, I don't know if you need to know this, but if any of you guys have been inside Pages daycare in the last couple of years, you probably want to know that there will be improvements on the inside. Um, we are remodeling to make it more accessible to individuals with disabilities. Right now, the bathrooms are completely inaccessible, and there's actually no way into the building if you have a wheelchair. You can only access certain areas, which we want to help. Um, there are also new paint and new flooring in everywhere that there was carpet, and new paint on the walls that there was not carpet. We're also going to make sure that we update all of the smoke detectors in the building to be what they need to be currently, and as well as fire extinguishers, and if you've ever been in the building, you know it's kind of a maze, so we're also going to try to clarify where the exits are and how to get out of the building. On the exterior, um, we have already spoken to UDOT, and the UDOT recommendations are on the last page, I won't read those to you, cause they're long and boring. But all of the recommendations from our meeting with them is on the last page. But, um, the south driveway will be closed off completely to traffic. Uh, the signage that's out there will be updated. We are going to put parking stalls in as indicated on your thing. Um, and then the existing landscape will remain for the back portion, but up front, we're going to update it and get, try to get rid of all of the wonderful sticker plants that are literally everywhere, and put rock in to help avoid those from growing back, and then we're going to place a dumpster at the northwest corner, yeah, of the parking lot and have that enclosed, cause there's currently no enclosed dumpster. So, and then there's the communication with UDOT, cause we've already reached out to them about access and everything, and what we need to do for them. Um, so, any questions?
I'm assuming the blue is the dumpster, is that correct?
Yes, yes, the blue is the dumpster. Oh, I didn't even see it was up over there, thank you, Steve.
Side, we share a fence with post office, and then this is a residential area, well, there's the.
There's the black back playground.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Steve?
Give me a sec. Wanted to bring up the presentation.
Thank you.
Which as many of you know, it's rare to have a well-put-together presentation.
It's really well done.
Thank you.
It was nice to see. Whoops, not that.
I like it, I wish everybody was that prepared, that was nice.
You saw the first one. Okay, so as mentioned, this is just a site plan review, um, they're not making any changes to the exterior of the building. There'd be some site changes, but that's, that's what we're here to cover. So it's just kind of give you an idea of where it's at, it's just south of the post office. Um, south of forty-eight hundred South, they're on the east side of the, or the west side of the road. Site plan that was provided originally that the, the DRC took a look at, um, did have some deficiencies. Uh, there were some of the things that they presented tonight that would help bring those into, into, into play. Uh, staff will just have to re-review the, the new site plan to make sure, and, but again, it's just, there's nothing of the comments that was large enough and required a whole change that would require, you know, for anything other than to allow you guys to approve it with the condition, so. As, as you can see with the, the site plan that they provided, it kind of shows that they're already looking at those and making those modifications, so. Staff will just re-look at that and make sure it, it meets everything. Not all the departments have provided their comments, so I'm still waiting for one, I think it is, and I'll yell at them again tomorrow. Um, but again, most of the, they're, they're minor things, so it's, it's nothing huge. So staff would just recommend approval of the site plan with the conditions as stated.
Any questions for Steve, or a motion is in order?
Make a motion to approve the site plan uh, with the conditions that are, um, are current and future DRC review comments and comply with, complied with, along with, oh, that makes sense. I think I missed a few words, anyway. Review comments are complied with, along any conditions stated, staff report.
Have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
And can, can I just make a comment real fast?
Absolutely.
I just, I just wanted to say that I really am excited for something like this in Roy. Not only to have it so close to so many schools and things so that parents can access it easily, but you're right, there's so many waiting lists for this type of thing, so this is, this is a huge thing for Roy, and I love that you're, you picked Roy to do it in, so.
All right, next item is commissioner's minute, I don't have anything, do any of the other commissioners have anything tonight?
On the record?
Do you want us just to make stuff up, just to have stuff, or?
I was gonna say, I swear there was something being built that I was like, do we know about that? Someone was asking if there's something built by, was it Weineger's?
Yeah, by Weineger's is what people have been asking.
And someone was like, not that the city knows of, and I don't know what's going on there.
Nothing has been formally submitted.
Okay.
I have been in talks with the developer, but that was probably six, seven months ago, and I haven't seen anything, so.
So just waiting.
Yeah, right now, I think they're just getting rid of the weeds, so.
Okay, I think just people saw movement, and so they wondered.
Probably just grubbed it rather than mowed it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to staff update.
Update-wise, something you guys didn't have to be involved with, but the city did do. It's, it's kind of one of those odd things. We had to update our flood prevention, flood damage prevention title, so Title twelve needed to be updated. It's not because the flood zone in our city changed, it's because we abut a section that did change, so that triggered us to have to update our code. So the council approved it last week, uh, to meet the, the FEMA standards and the state requirements and, and whatnot, so that kind of was on the, on the thing going on. You guys have just looked at the subdivision, so that will go to the city council, just for them to review, they, they probably won't look at it this month. Actually, they, they won't, cause the twenty-first is election day, so get out and vote if you haven't yet. Uh, but it'll probably be in December, that they'll look at it, or January, depending on what they want to do. By December, we'll know who's on the council, who isn't, so, um, they can decide then. Otherwise, um, many of the projects that you've seen that are being built are getting closer to be finished. You got Abington Heights off of Hinckley in nineteen, I think you've got one or two buildings left to, to finish on the outside. One off of forty-three hundred Park Forty-three, um, I know six of the buildings, at least the outsides are, are done. Then a couple buildings, the insides are done, and they're looking to, to have people start renting them.
What about that development that was, it was on the agenda a while ago, but there were the Dilly-Dalas used to be?
All that, Starbucks?
Yeah, Woodbury.
The Woodbury, yeah.
Oh, Woodbury Development.
Yeah, and there were two projects that we reviewed, Woodbury's, and then there was another one, forty units down south by the
liquor store.
Saco's and that. Uh, they're kind of putting themselves on hold, um, to help the city get through the other taxing agencies, so Weaver County, Weaver School District, to get the, our CRAs going, uh, so they helped us to get through those, both the county and the district approved. I can't remember what percentage or what amount or, or what have you, but I know we got to the big, the big one, so they kind of waited to see what, that would happen, so they could try to get some tax incentives to, to help pay for those. Construction costs aren't going down, they're only going up, in order to, to build those kind of projects, they need a little help. So that's kind of where those two are, they're, they're just kind of waiting. Um, other than that, ordinance-wise, hopefully the subdivision goes through. And I think the next one is the water element and the general plan, I've applied for a grant. I gotta finish off the application by December first, so that's what I'll be working on next. If we get that, then in twenty-twenty-four July, we will start that process, cause we have to have that approved by December twenty-twenty-five. Seems like a long ways away, but those of you who know the general plan, it took what, three and a half years? COVID didn't help, but it took a long time, so we'll, we'll go through that. That's all I've got.
Oh, and the, the training that you emailed us about?
Oh, yeah, there's some training that I emailed, if you can make it, let me know. Um, if you have done some training, uh, like, there was one before, you can just go on and listen to, it was a training that we had during our work session. Uh, I think Utah League's put out, uh, you can go and visit that, just send me that you, you reviewed it and, and saw it, I can put it on, cause you have to have so many hours of, of training. Um, so I, I don't know, Ryan, if you've got any from the APA conference that you went to, any certificates, if you did, give those, copies them to me. Um, this other one was a couple days, I can't remember who's putting it on, so. Just if you attend them, let me know, we can chalk it down.
Did you get my certificates from the APA?
I didn't.
I think.
So if you got any.
They handed them to us, I didn't know.
Yeah, just give me copies.
It was for one of the sessions, otherwise, if we just give you a list of which sessions we attended, they only had certificates at one of them.
Okay. I'll, I'll send you a list, and you can just check off which ones, and we'll count those for the times.
That's helpful, thank you.
And just so you know, as long as we have twelve, you know, twelve months of planning commissions, that actually counts as one hour of your training.
Just one hour?
Just one hour.
But we haven't had twelve months.
You've had enough.
Okay.
Okay, well, our final motion is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everybody starts looking at Chris.
Everybody just looks, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do you want these back?
No, they're yours.
You can do whatever you want with them. You can read more of them.